Welcome to the South River Mayor and Borough Council Meeting Number 16 being held today on September 13th, 2021. I'm calling this meeting to order to statement of notice of publication. Madam Clerk?
In compliance with Chapter 231 of Public Law of 1975, notice of this meeting to be held at the Criminal Justice Building, 61 Main Street, South River has been published in the Home News Tribune on September 7th, 2021, posted on the Municipal Building Bulletin Board, the Borough website, the front door of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River.
Role call, please.
Mayor Crenzel?
Here.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Here.
Councilman Siula?
Here.
Councilman Gindi?
Here.
Councilman Gerchinsky?
Here.
Councilwoman Mira?
Here.
Thank you. And Councilman Olivera?
Here.
Please stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please be seated. There are no proclamations, honors, or presentations. However, we must go into executive session where there may be action taken afterwards. So that is why we're having it at the beginning of the meeting. My apologies. Madam Clerk?
Resolution 2021-246 authorizing entrance into executive session for topics of litigation, rescue squad, and anticipated litigation. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
A motion has been made by Councilwoman Ballas, seconded by Councilman Olivera. Role call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Councilman Siula?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gerchinsky?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mira?
Yes.
And Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Thank you.
We shall return. All right then. Thank you all for your patience. May I have a motion to reopen the meeting?
Motion.
A motion has been made by Mr. Gindi, seconded by Mr. Siula. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. We will be revisiting this during consent resolutions. Moving on to the agenda session, this is where we discuss various matters. You know, it should be part of our business, part of our business meeting, but we now have it as part of our one regular meeting. The agenda session concerns Blue Acres. Mr. Gindi has asked to speak on this subject.
Yes. As you all know, Blue Acres originally started when Superstorm Sandy devastated New Jersey. And along with doing that, they also devastated so many other townships such as South River. South River experienced a lot of houses that now are inhabitable. And the state came up with an idea of buying these houses out. When they decided to buy these houses, they put a clause on it where we, a borough, are not allowed to build on it. We're not allowed to utilize the piece of property. But when I started reading into the actual clause, there was an interesting word in it, which was the word recreational. So I had several meetings with the DEP, along with Mr. Koch. And it was an interesting and informative meeting where my argument with DEP was, they own the property, but yet the borough cuts the grass, maintains it, and we pay money into it. So it kind of bothers me that we're paying into something that we are not getting nothing in return. So after speaking to the DEP, they came up with interesting, I came up with questions where the answers were better than I expected, such as, what would stop me from building a garden? Or having a community garden? Or leveling off two or three lots, making it nice and smooth and grass, and using it as an open field? Or a park, but with no stationary, what do you call it, playgrounds, equipment? So when they came back and they said, yes, this is something that you can explore, they used other townships that till today are using it, such as Woodbridge, where they're using Blue Acres to their benefit. And the borough is benefiting out of it. So instead of us paying into something that we're not getting anything in return, now we can. So the way it would work is, and this goes for everybody on the council, you could go to your committees, or any resident that thinks he has an idea. We would have to put in a request with the DEP, and they would come back and tell us yes or no, they're okay with what we want to use it for. Now, for example, the community garden, I know it's located at the end of Causeway at the Cannon Building, Cannon Park. Technically speaking, we would be allowed to use it as a garden, but we would not be allowed to put up a fence. They won't allow it. But this is just an idea. Basically, what I'm trying to do is beautify all these rundown pieces of property throughout the township that was, you know, involved in this storm. And unfortunately, we still have more houses on the list for the buyouts, and South River's still taking a bad hit when it comes down to our taxes, our water, and our electricity. So this is just an idea. Give us some thought. I already have a couple ideas on my own that I'm working on, which I'm going to present to the council before I decide to go forward with presenting it to the DEP. But if anyone else is interested, feel free to reach out.
Thank you. Just to give you an idea, just how crazy some of the rules and regulations are. You can put a picnic bench on the property. You just can't anchor it into the property. Well, you can imagine how long that picnic bench is going to be there. And I'm not talking about the water taking it away. Thank you, Mr. Gindi.
Thank you.
Please keep us abreast of developments.
I absolutely will.
Ordinances, second reading, public hearing, 2021-15. Madam Clerk?
An ordinance of the Borough of South River, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey, amending Borough Code of the Borough of South River so as to amend Chapter 193 entitled Vehicles and Traffic.
Make a motion to waive the full reading?
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Siula to waive the full reading, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Opening this up to the public, please give your name and address if you'd like to come and ask questions or make comments concerning this ordinance, which concerns no parking on Leonardine Avenue South. On first call, second call, third call?
Motion.
Motion has been made by Mr. Gindi to close, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Your pleasure on the ordinance.
Make a motion to move the ordinance?
I'll second that.
The ordinance has been moved by Mr. Siula, seconded by Mr. Gindi. Discussion? Role call.
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gerchinsky?
Yes.
And Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Just for the record, Councilwoman Mira exited the meeting right after executive session.
Thank you. The ordinance has been adopted. Ordinances, first reading by title only, 2021-16. Madam Clerk?
Bond ordinance providing for roof replacement for municipal buildings appropriating $350,000. Therefore, authorizing the issuance of $332,500 bonds and notes to finance a portion of the cost thereof authorized in and by the Borough of South River and the County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey. May I have a motion to accept?
Mayor, I'd like to move that the council pass ordinance 2021-16 on its first reading by title only, and that the clerk be authorized to publish the same as required by law with a second reading and public hearing to be held at 7:00 PM on October the 4th via video conference, via Zoom, or the council chambers of the Criminal Justice Building at 61 Main Street, South River, New Jersey.
Second.
Motion has been made by Mr. Siula, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. Role call?
Councilwoman Ballas?
Yes.
Council President Siula?
Yes.
Councilman Gindi?
Yes.
Councilman Gerchinsky?
Yes.
And Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
We will revisit this at our October 4th meeting. Time for our reports. As we traditionally do, we begin with our Borough Engineer, Mr. Koch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everybody. The 2020/2021 local aid projects and the curb and sidewalk project are out to bid. The bids are due to be received on September 23rd. I've spoken with the Borough Clerk about having it on the agenda for the October 4th meeting for an award. The 2022 local aid programs documents have been submitted. I believe in a few months, we'll hear from the DOT regarding that. The substation maintenance is all done, except for the sweeps and the cables, which is the same report as last time because they're waiting for the weather to be more consistently cool so that they can take those out of service without putting a strain on the substation. Well number two replacement, the well is complete and it passed the flow test. The old well has been abandoned. And this week, the contractor would be performing the connections to the water treatment plant. And the Safe Roots of Schools grant is still there as a reminder if anybody has anything that they think would be eligible. And that is it, sir. I'll answer questions if there are any.
Questions or comments from Mr. Koch?
Hearing none. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay. I'm sorry. Yes?
No, they're still doing reports.
We're doing reports. We'll call you up soon. Okay. Okay. Moving on. Thank you, Mr. Koch. Mr. Zenga?
A few items on the agenda. The introduction of bond ordinance, the sub notice statement has been filed with the state and is also on file with the clerk. A couple of resolutions, purchase of radios, and SCBA vodals for fire department. They're under state contract against the bond ordinance. That was passed in August. And then the last one is the conversion of one of the garbage trucks to a roll-off container that is also under the bond ordinance. Lastly, there's a resolution for a grant agreement. This was from the Jackson Street Firehouse, Borough trying to seek $65,411 reimbursement. So that's a good resolution tonight. That has to go down with all the other documents.
Any questions or comments from Mr. Zenga? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zenga. Mrs. Sores?
Yes, Mayor. Starting on Tuesday, October 12th, we'll be handing out leaf bags down at the DPW yard from Monday to Friday from 8:00 AM to noon. Address is Nine Island Way. You can bring a coupon, a driver's license, or a utility bill to get your 20 free bags. And also on October 12th, we're starting the curbside leaf pickup with the leaf bag on the south side of town.
Any questions or comments to Mr. Sores? Hearing none. Thank you, sir. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor. I just have a couple things. The only thing I have on the agenda is the second reading of that ordinance for the milk park on Leonardine. That just clears a line of sight from all those vehicles that are coming on Constitution and making that turn onto Leonardine. So just by moving the vehicles off there, not allowing anybody to park, it gives them a line of sight, makes it safer for vehicles. The other things I have is our body worn camera program is official as of today, starting at noon. All of our uniform patrol officers are wearing body cams. Starting tomorrow, if you go onto the South River Police Department's website, there will be information in there on what the body cameras are. There'll be a picture of the body cameras, so you can actually see what the body cameras look like. It took a little while for us to train our officers with vacations and people being off, but finally, we have everyone trained. And then eventually, as the year goes on, probably by, hopefully by the beginning of next year, we'll have all of our officers wearing body cams, including, you know, the Executive Bureau of Special Operations. Another thing I have is North Brunswick Police Department, I'm not sure if anybody's aware of this, but North Brunswick Police Department, because of Tropical Storm Ida, got flooded. They lost about 30 police vehicles. They had four feet of water in their police department. Last week, there was a call for all of the Middlesex County Police Departments to donate some vehicles for time being until they can get up and running. It might be a little while because, you know, there's a shortage on police vehicles. So we donated one of our vehicles, one of our traffic safety slash extra duty vehicles to that location. So if anybody is driving in North Brunswick and you see a South River police car driving through there, they're not gallivanting. It's there for a reason. All right. And finally, my last thing, as I know Councilman Gindi will probably go over this, is that Municipal Alliance had asked me to pitch that on September 30th at 6:00 PM, Municipal Alliance will be having their first car show of their organization. So other than that, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments to the chief?
Chief, will the SLOs have body cams too?
I'm sorry?
The SLOs, will they have those?
No.
No?
No.
Anyone else? Thank you, chief. Madam Clerk, anything to report?
Yes, I do, Mayor. Thank you. I'm going to talk a little bit about early in-person voting. 10 municipalities in Middlesex County have been chosen. South River is not one of them. However, Saraval Senior Center at 423 Main Street and East Brunswick Community Arts Center at 721 Cranberry Road, they have been chosen. Any residents within Middlesex County can go to these locations, and the eight others that Middlesex County Board of Elections have chosen in early in-person voting will begin on October 23rd and go through October 31st, Halloween. Monday through Saturday, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM voting. Sundays, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. And then there will be the regular general election day, I believe it's November 2nd, I want to say, off the top of my head, or 3rd, I'd have to look. But that will be normal. Anyone who has, who normally receives mail-in ballots, you still can go vote in person. However, if you've, the ballots are going out this week from the county. So if you received yours and you don't want to go that route, you can go to the in-person voting. However, they'll have you do provisional, but this year provisional will be electronic. It's a nice new feature. There's electronic poll books this year for the poll workers. All poll workers are going to have to go through training for everything new that's going on. My other item is mercantile applications. Since the August 23rd meeting, Paradise Flowers Distributor LLC has been approved. We also received McGwess Art, which is a tattoo shop. They're pending. The Burning Panda Tobacco Shop, they were approved today. They received their license. And another business, Beautiful Nails, a nail salon, which is pending. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Hello, sir? Anything to report on the legal side?
No.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Lundenski?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing we have really is, after getting through the jungle of transferring over our URL for the webpage, the new webpage will be launching within the next 24 to 48 hours. But when it does launch, there are probably some things on it yet that have to be corrected by our personnel that's trained now. So it'll take about a week or so to clean it up. But we do have the webmaster, and the Borough Clerk is familiar with that webpage. So you should be seeing it by the end of the week.
Very good. Any questions, comments? Nope? Okay. Then we will have our liaison reports from the governing body. Start with, start with Mr. Gindi.
Thank you. Our next planning board meeting is going to be on September 21st, right here at 7:00 PM. There are quite a few applications among us. A lot of interesting projects coming up the pike with South River. I would urge you to come out and see what this town is about to endure. Our next zoning board meeting is going to be on September 28th. I believe they are still Zoom. Is that correct, Art?
No, this one will be live.
It will be here at 7:00 PM. Parks and Rec, we are working on the next Truck a Treat, which is going to be, I believe, October 31st. Time will be announced as we get closer. That's all I have.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, sir. Mrs. Ballas?
Yeah, just on behalf of the Historical and Preservation Society, they're going to be opening the time capsule on September 26th, the Sunday, at 1:00 PM in front of the War Memorial Building. They have opened the museum back up. The museum is open to the general public from 1:30 PM to 3:30 PM on the first Sunday of each month. If you get a chance, we receive these every month, the letter from them. They have the most, this is the most amazing stuff. Stuff I never knew that happened in town. The Richard K. Myers Memorial South River High School History School Essay Contest this year, well, 2021, yeah, it was won by Vincent Laporte. He's a senior who's going to be going to Montclair State. And his essay was about Drew Pearson and getting into the Hall of Fame. But the history in this pamphlet, if you get a chance to go down there when it's open, pick it up. I read a lot of stuff, and I find, I love reading this. Every month I get it. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Siula?
Thank you, Mayor. A few things here. First, September 11th, the South River Exempt Firemen's Association dedicated a new memorial alongside the firehouse on Jackson Street. It was designed by our sculptor, Blaze Batko, former resident of the town, graduated South River High School. It went off very well. There was a lot of people at the dedication. It was a beautiful day, and it went off great. And at 6:30 that night, we had our regular 9/11 dedication at Daley's Pond. We had a large attendance there also. And again, thank you to all the residents who came out and participated and supported the fire department and our local 9/11 memorials. We have also FEMA for our residents that have been affected by Superstorm Ida now. FEMA is opened for our Disaster Recovery Center. It's opened up at the Middlesex County Fire Academy, which is on the Main Street Extension, 1001, Fire Academy Drive in Saraval. The hours are there from Monday to Friday from 7:00 to 7:00, and Saturday and Sunday from 8:00 to 4:00. New Jersey residents impacted by the hurricane can visit, and there's no appointment necessary. And also, the EDA grants for small businesses affected by Ida. And they are, it's opening up, the program is starting September the 17th. And the application process is at www njeda.com/henri-ida-relief. So any business owner that needs any help, please go to that website. It starts on September the 17th, and we can move forward with, that people can get help and move forward with their businesses. And with that, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Olivera?
Good evening, everyone. Library hasn't met in the month of August, but Evolina was able to send me some updates. Couple meetings ago, I discussed that they applied for two grants. I'm happy to announce that the library did win a grant for Chromebooks and hotspots to lend to the public. So they're working very hard, and hopefully, you know, that will be starting up soon. Summer hour, I'm sorry, Sunday hours will now be in effect on September 12th, and they will be from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and same thing on Saturday. And when it comes to the fall programming schedule, they will be bringing back the Haunted Library, which will take place from October 15th to October 31st. And they have some great new additions. And remember, it's just not for the kids. They do have adult programming as well. So please visit their website. They do a great job promoting everything. And I'm sure they'll be happy to have some new faces walk through the door. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gerchinsky?
Thank you, Mayor. We've had a pretty busy past week and everything, too. The Office on Aging had their affair down at Grikowski Park, which was very successful. School is back. I'm going to ask the parents to please have a little discretion when you're dropping off your children at school. The buses in a parking situation has gotten back to the way it used to be before. And it's a little bit hair-rising, too. And there's, you tempers are flying and what have been. Please contain yourselves if you possibly can. And use a better, use a bit of discretion when you do that. You realize you want to get your children there, especially if it's in foul weather or something like that. I know you want to get them as close as possible to the school, but you got to give the consideration to other folks, too. Oh, let's see. A few other things, too, with the DPW. We had the first reading on our bond ordinance that we're proposing. The conditions that are down at the DPW yard, the buildings and everything are horrendous. And it's, if anyone's been down there, especially for recycling, or lawn waste, or anything else, too, you could take a look and see at the buildings. They're pretty in, pretty rough shape. They've been there since, oh, God. The old generator housing and everything, too. I think there's more holes in the roof than there are bricks in the building. But anyway, that's part of the bond ordinance. And if anyone has had the chance to go down to the recycling center and see that the conditions down there that the guys have to work with, they're really working with shoestring. We've gotten quite a bit of new equipment and everything like that, too, but, you know, the list goes on. Town does need a lot of tender loving care. With that, I thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay. I have nothing to report at this time. I'll say a few words later. We are coming to our agenda where we will have our public comments. So please come forward, give your name and address, and you'll have 10 minutes to speak.
Yeah, hi, Ron.
Come on, come on.
You get to come up and talk here. Don't be nervous.
Not at all.
Why should we be? We're taxpayers.
Name's Ron, and my wife Karen, Takak, 2 Highland Avenue. We have a couple issues here. We've been addressing for the last
Years.
Couple of years.
So let's start with number 40, Old Bridge Turnpike, which he'll have to finish up. But Mayor, I spoke to you about, A, there's a big dead tree,
Right.
which is on their property. I get that. But it really is a hazard. If this tree comes down, it's either coming on our house or on South River wires. So
Okay.
I had, excuse me, I had a grandkid sleepover during that storm. We slept in the basement because I was so afraid of our fear that we have a two-story home. Something's got to be done. Now, we did send a certified letter to the homeowner, which was dated November 11th of 2019, carboned in by Allstate, which is our insurance company. And they were put on notice, and they said, oh, yep, we're going to do something. They don't do it. I'm not surprised.
I don't know what the codes are as far as it's on their property, okay? I approached the person. He said, I'm going to get a specialist out here to look at it. Nothing was done. I got pictures. I had to replace two, it's a vicinity of maybe 150 feet from our pool to the tree, two pool covers where branches fallen. And when there's a windstorm coming up, these people park their cars on Highland Avenue and not on their side driveway. So they know there's an issue. I need some direction. I don't know, you know, what you could do as far as helping us. I'm sure you can't go to them and say, hey, you need to cut this down, and whatever the protocol is.
And Mayor, I think one of the last emails we got from you, you recommended for us to get an attorney. We shouldn't have to pay for an attorney at this point.
No, we already put our insurance company on notice, and we sent them a certified letter.
But in the meantime, just let me say this. If this tree comes down, it's going to be on the township's issue. When it comes down on the wires, it's South River's problem. Just hopefully, it doesn't kill us. That's all. That's all I'm going to say. There's got to be something done, and
We have looked into it, and there is nothing that the town can do. So.
Okay, you're on notice, and so now you're going to address the car issue.
There's a car that's been there parked over five years, maybe seven years. An old car. It's jacked up and everything. It's got a sticker on there from 2013. I guess that was the last time it was on the road. Spoke to Peter. He addressed prob, he went out, thanked, thank you for that and stuff, and spoke to the neighbors. That they were waiting for a part.
Five years for a part? Are you kidding me?
But if you look at this car, it needs more than a part.
And it's not even like
It's, I mean, I don't want to be a bad neighbor.
Did they put the tent up that they promised?
Yeah.
Well, they just put it up Friday night. But guess what? Well, they just put it up Friday night. But guess what? That's a band-aid. So that's going to happen. We get a snowstorm and wind. It's coming our way. That thing's not going to stay out.
They did put a cover over it, yeah. One of those plastic and, yeah, one of those tarp's and stuff, yeah. Okay.
Was that recommended by you guys or?
It hides the issue. I understand.
No, this is something where I believe code enforcement has, you know, he went to the neighbor and he spoke to...
I spoke with...
No, it looks better, but the issue is still the issue.
I spoke with him and didn't recommend it to them. So somebody must have. It wasn't him.
So...
This is the same address?
When I spoke to him, I told him, you got to get it out of here.
Yeah, so if it's not registered, don't they have...
But it is registered.
Is it registered?
It's not registered, no.
He's saying that, no, it's not.
Got a 2013.
We have grandkids.
Yeah, it's been there. Somebody was living there and it was their car. And I don't think he lives there. I don't know if the kids, I don't know if the kids go to our school system. We see people, people pick up the kids. That's another issue, too.
No, I'm not bringing it here.
Yeah.
So that's that, but...
That's 40 Old Bridge Turnpike, which is adjacent to ours.
So in other words, so your answer to us is you can't help us at all, other than what's been done? Nothing?
That's essentially it.
Can't do nothing with the tree. I'm sure.
And why?
All right.
So if this tarp comes down on top of the car, and it's back again, now what do we do? What is the code as far as keeping a car?
Yeah, we don't know.
Who's the attorney there?
And we'll be here a few more times.
Yes, I'll see the attorney there.
And we're going to be looking into this and following up on this because we're not done here. We're not getting a yes or no answer and going home and saying we're satisfied.
I don't know what the code is for an attorney. In other words, how long can you keep a rusty, junky car on blocks for five, six years, not registered?
I will have our regular attorney contact you.
You told me when you, when I saw you, you never go back to me.
Well, she's still looking into it, so...
Okay, so I'm going to make a note that you'll get back to me?
Yes. In fact, contact me within a week. Call and that.
Okay.
I'm going to reach out to the resident again.
The next address is...
It's 36 Old Bridge Turnpike, which is adjacent across the street from us. He put up a plastic fence a year ago, but since then, up top, I could see from our bedrooms, he dragged out, he's got three couches out there, or three mattresses. I'm getting eaten up by mosquitoes.
It's across the street from you?
I got to ask this question.
Yeah, 36 Old Bridge Turnpike.
Oh, because I thought it was next to 40.
Next to 40, going up towards Race Track Road, across from...
Across the street.
Right, Highland Avenue.
So we got 36 and 40.
He's got a couch out there. He's got three mattresses for two months.
Hold on. I have a question. I have a question.
Okay.
I have a question. On Saturday, not only did I take the ride out there, so did the director of DPW. We couldn't find it. So all you have to do is show me where this is and we'll have it removed.
Oh, I can, you got to see it.
Is this something where we're driving, we see it?
Where are you pointing to? Where are you pointing to?
Well, he's got a, he's got a plastic white fence he put up...
You can't see unless you go upstairs in my house.
Wait, wait.
Is it his property?
It's on his property.
Behind a fence.
But he had mentioned to you that he was going to throw it out on bulk pickup on that Friday, which I think was in June or July. It's still been sitting there.
So it's on his other side?
I mean, it's not an eyesore. I can't see it from the road. But when I go upstairs in our bedrooms, you can see it's...
Look at us. We can't even sit in our yard. We're all bitten up. And furthermore, that house was cited by Tom once again for having people living in the basement. They're back again.
We believe there's people living in the...
In the basement.
We saw some construction. There's two new people. There's another vehicle and stuff. Like I said, I don't want to be a bad neighbor.
I'll speak to Tom.
And I don't want to confront these people and be...
What I'm saying is to you guys is...
Texas County Fire officials.
Um, you know.
How can you believe what these people are telling you? They're not doing what they're telling you.
Yeah, I get it.
And we pay good taxes. We have a beautiful home.
We all do.
Our neighbors have beautiful homes.
Right.
And we're living with these two houses that are in, I don't even know with that garage on number 36.
Oh, don't even look in the garage. It's...
That's right, city.
Yeah.
Well, he's got rugs on his side porch that have been there for 10 years, just sitting on the...
I mean, just, just...
Soaking lamp.
I mean, are we bitching? Yes, we're bitching. But we need some direction. We need some, we need some guidance, what we can do. We'll work with you. You work with us. I don't, I don't want to be a bad neighbor and go over there, knock on the door and, you know, hey.
Well, we've tried to deal with them. They don't, they don't want to deal.
Just to confirm, the people you said are living in the basement, is that 36 OBT?
36 OBT.
And once again...
There's a guy and a girl there.
No, the man that owns it, he'll tell you every story on that. No speaking English? Believe me, he speaks English. Believe me, he does.
They all speak English when...
When they need to speak English. They don't need...
I don't believe what I'm telling you the truth. And we're tired of looking at this. If our house is bringing down the value of...
Tom had cited him as far as the fine. I think it was last year and stuff. He came to court and he was spitting on the floor and stuff.
Yeah.
When Tom cited him and he was fined, I don't know, $100 and stuff. Because Tom's been over the house. We've been in contact with him. Hey, what are you doing? What are you doing?
Tom's trying to help us, the code enforcer. His hands are tied. We need your help here.
Yeah.
Somebody help us.
Whatever you can do.
All right. Very good. I'll talk to you in a week. Thank you.
You know, grew up in this town. We've been here, went to South River High School and both of us.
So we are going to submit them to you by next week.
Either myself or Mr. Gindy, because already these three are over here planning and plotting.
Get to it.
Oh, no.
She's writing this down.
Now, we have a nice place and we're not dealing with this no more.
I appreciate your help, everyone. Yeah, thank you.
And who is the attorney, by the way? Is he a...
No, she's not here today.
She's covering for her.
Oh, what's her name?
Andrea.
I'm sorry?
Andrea.
Andrea. And is there a last name?
Wyatt.
Wyatt?
W-Y-A-T-T. I'll look into the vehicle issue, though.
Yeah, there's got to be some kind of...
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Good evening. Richard Byrne, 11 to set place. I'm speaking as the Chair of our Environmental Commission today. I can just show you, this is the tree that she's talking about on 40 Old Bridge Turnpike. In 2018, it was beautiful. It was full. It was alive. It is stone cold dead today. I went out and measured. They had put in a tree application and there's no curb there, but I measured from the curb line and it was 14 feet from the curb. And 10 feet is the public right of way. So it wasn't in our jurisdiction. We denied the application and stating that they had removed the tree at their own expense. So we did what we're supposed to do with that. But this is the sixth tree of the 22 we've handled so far this year that were alive in 2018 and are stone cold dead today. So we're going to look at, see if we can get an expert to come examine some of these, to see if we have a problem in town and if there's something we can do about it. And so...
Yeah, because I, when I looked at Google Earth, I looked at it and you're right. I mean, it was a beautiful tree. And then I drove by it and it's dead, which made me realize that the picture from Google Earth was years ago.
Yeah. On Street View, you can pick. In South River, it goes back to 2007. So you can get a really good history on some of the stuff that was there and what it looks like today. So, and there are five other big trees that are dead today that were alive three years ago. So we're going to look into that. So the second thing is with the spotted lantern fly, they, the state added Middlesex County to the quarantine list, which essentially means that residents don't have to report sightings of them anymore. Stomp them if you see them, get rid of them. The quarantine has to do with commercial trucks and contractors are required to inspect their vehicles and equipment before they enter or leave the county to make sure none have hitched a ride either in or out. But the general public doesn't have to worry about that. This is about the time of year where they're going to start laying their eggs. So residents are urged to check their trees to see if they find any egg masses, rows of spots with crusts over. The instructions are to use a dull metal blade to scrape them off into a Ziploc bag, seal the Ziploc bag, crush the eggs, and throw them in the trash if you find them. You know, everyone we kill now is one we don't have to worry about next year. So that's that. As the Environmental Commission, this Saturday is World Cleanup Day. And we've come up with an idea for community activity. It's not an in-person gathering. It's an activity for the residents. We're calling it Have a Great Day, G-R-A-T-E, where we're asking residents to go to the nearest storm drain near their residence. And if there's debris or garbage or something, anything blocking it, to clean it out, to help the next time we have a heavy rain, if we can clear these out. And we're asking for people, if you find something strange or weird or to take a picture of it and send it to the Environmental Commission. And we're just going to do a little collage of strange things people found in their drains. But it's, you know, just, you know, asking the residents to help out and help prevent flooding with respect to the storm drains. So we have, the information is on the Green Team Facebook page, so.
There's also the Environmental Commission, Joe.
Yes. The South River Environmental Commission Green Team has a separate Facebook page. So we have two Facebook pages, different functions. There we go.
Thank you.
Just a quick note. You see those flies?
Yeah.
Or bees? Hairspray. Shouldn't we have hairspray? They can't fly. Believe me, it works. I'm telling you. I use it on spiders, bees. Get them hairspray.
It's beyond that point there. Here, it's got to be something else as far as sprays and...
But I can keep hairspray outside.
No, that's a good thing to know because I try to get them and they're very quick.
They are.
Either that or I'm getting very old.
You have a can of hairspray and you get a quick...
Thank you. We'll be in touch.
All right.
Good night. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else? On first call, second call, third call?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Mr. Seola, seconded by Mr. Olivera. All in favor?
Aye.
Against? The ayes have it. Moving on with the agenda, there is one mayor appointment, Hartman Walker Jr. to the Planning Board, alternate one. We now come to our consent resolutions. Madam Clerk?
Whereas Resolution 202101 authorizes the Borough Council utilize a consent agenda to adopt various resolutions of a routine and non-controversial nature at one time. Now therefore be it, and it is hereby resolved that the Google-O listed resolutions are hereby adopted by the Borough Council in whole, as if the same were individually acted upon. Resolution 247, accept August 23 regular council minutes and also executive council minutes. 248, accept grant from hazardous discharge site remediation fund public entity program. 249, approve South River Borough of Education October requisition of funds and debt service. 250, authorize special events application fee refund to Redeemer Presbyterian Church. 251, authorize executive of amendment to Metro PCS lease agreement. 252, authorize electronic tax sale. 253, authorize tax sale notice fee. 254, authorize September 13 utility refunds. 255, authorize purchase of fire department portable radios via state contract. 256, authorize purchase of fire department SCIBA bottles via state contract. 257, authorize fire department boot drive on October 23. 258, authorize conversion of truck to a roll-off vehicle for public works. And 259, authorize the bills and claims list. May I have a motion?
Two forty-six, or, sorry.
You were going to add the ones that we had for BMS.
I'm sorry. And Resolution 260, authorizing the execution of a settlement and release. Shall I read in full?
We're set. Now you don't read, so full.
Okay.
All right, motion.
Motion has been made by Mr. Gindy, seconded by Mrs. Ballas concerning consent resolutions to accept same. Roll call.
Councilwoman Ballas? Council President Seola?
Yes, with the following extensions from 255, 256, 257, and 259 as follows. 20-00385, 21-01856, 01276, 01683, and 01319.
Thank you. Councilman Gindy?
Yes, with the extensions of 255, 256, 257. Then on the bills for 259 is 20-00385, 21-01276, 01683, 01856, and 01319.
Thank you. Councilman Gertchinsky?
Yes.
Councilman Olivera?
Yes.
Okay.
Resolutions have been accepted and adopted. There is no new business, so we come down to the governing body comments for the good and welfare of the borough. We'll start this time with Mr. Gertchinsky.
Thank you, Mayor. With this, again, like I reiterated before, schools in session. Folks, please be careful out there. Be aware of those children. Be a little bit courteous to the other parents that are dropping off their children and trying to get to work and what have you. Also, the neighbors in the neighborhood and everything, too, because they also have to get to work and get out of their driveways and whatever. The leaf bags with the DPW, they will be available on, what was that, October, October 12th. The leaf bags will be available at the DPW during the day. Inevitably, what they will do is they'll have them set up on a Saturday for the folks at work because it's during the daytime hours. And we're also going to have the curb vac going around, too, picking up the leaf piles and everything, too. So be aware. Check your calendar and everything when they are coming around and everything, too, so we don't have piles of leaves in the street blocking the storm sewers because I'm sure we're going to have a little bit more bad weather. And also with any debris that you might have had, if you've gotten water into your residence or anything like that, too, please call the DPW and arrange for a bulk pickup if they're going to throw out anything that you might have had stored in the basement that had gotten ruined. With that, I think that's pretty much it. I thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Mr. Olivera?
Yeah, first and foremost, you know, I would like to thank Sal and the TV 35 crew for live streaming the 9/11 memorials. It was awesome that it was able to be live streamed and residents were able to see it in real time. As Councilman Gertchinsky mentioned, we're back to school. Please make sure, you know, the police department on their Facebook page had a schematic of how to drive into the Board of Ed complex. Make sure you follow that. There are a ton of kids. It's a beautiful sight to see everyone back. Unfortunately, you know, I live on Mercer. There was a lot of traffic, which is normal for this time. So again, everyone, please be safe. Enjoy the nice weather. It's starting to get nice and cool. And please make sure you come out to the municipal car show. I think it's going to be a great event and just another awesome gem for our town to be able to put on car shows that, you know, how we had in the past. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Seola?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, as everybody said, please watch out for our children walking to school. There's a lot of children out there. There's a lot of cars. Also, our borough workers are out there doing their job and people are dropping their children off at school. Please be aware of our borough workers. They're on the backs of trucks. They're picking up. They're crossing streets. Please be very careful and be aware of these guys when they're doing their job. I want to thank all our first responders for a great job everybody did with the rescues and from the storms. And just to let you know, I mean, these guys are out there all hours and they just go out there and they just do their job, no questions asked. So again, thank you to all our first responders. And that's it, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ballas?
So we're going to keep on the subject of the schools. I get a fair drive view every morning on Fairview Avenue. I understand it's frustrating. You want to get your kids safe, but there has to be some courtesy. There have been quite a few, not maybe all driveways blocked, but they get so close that you can't pull out or make the turn. Or cars are coming at each other. It's like they're playing chicken. Nobody will move. And then the... And then the traffic just flows and no one goes. I get it. But just be a little bit more courteous and make sure your kids all get to school safe. And I hope that as it goes on, it clears up a little bit more. I attended both memorials, nine eleven memorial services, and they were just so very heartfelt. And it was good to see so many of our residents out and a great job by both groups of people that set them up. Yesterday, I attended St. Mary's picnic. It was great. I love those people. They really have it set up. Thank you to Councilwoman Gertchinsky for spending all that time on the girl. You did a heck of a job. And I'd like to thank all our first responders, our police officers, our borough workers. I know they're out there. They're working at the fullest. And just again, I thank them for all they do. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Gindy?
Thank you. Well, we had another hurricane, well, another tropical storm, I don't. And something I learned about this storm was there were so many houses that you don't know about that were actually devastated based on the sump pump failing. I was one of them. I took in nine inches of water. What I'm saying is you should check up on your neighbors, check up on your friends. Make sure that they're okay. I know it's not easy, especially when in the middle of a storm. But I must have called quite a few people. I'm sure enough, to my surprise, they had issues. So, you know, be aware. Well, the car show is back. September thirtieth, Thursday night, five o'clock, right here on Main Street. We have a lot of cars, quite a few riders. It's gonna be a great night. Please come out and support the municipal alliance. Nine eleven, Christopher Dinkov, well, he'll never be forgotten and neither will all the other victims that endured that night or that day. The ceremonies were incredible. Mrs. McGaw, incredible speech that she put out. My hat goes out to her. I know we've been talking about schools, but I'm going to welcome a new school in South River. A private school, Saint Mark Coptic Christian Academy, which is the old Corpus Christi. Be aware that there's now a little bit more kids than usual. So be a little aware. Time capsule, September twenty-sixth, which is gonna be on Sunday. What time is it?
One.
At one o'clock. Please come out and support. And to Sal and TV thirty-five, phenomenal job on nine eleven. And to all the borough workers, thank you for what you do. So I have...
Thank you. I attended various events that have been going on in town from the Brazilian flag raising to the ceremonies on September eleventh. You know, at that ceremony on Jackson Street in the morning of September eleventh, I made a plea for volunteers for the fire department. I'm not gonna sugarcoat it. I mean, it takes work to be a firefighter, but it's incredibly rewarding and it's something that you should seriously consider in terms of giving back to your community. Because not only will you be protecting the town, but you'll be protecting your own home. So please seriously think about it. You can contact Mr. Seula up here or Mr. Gindy about, you know, what it would take to become a South River firefighter. You heard about the events, you know, you could see them on TV thirty-five, thanks to Sal and his TV thirty-five crew. It's, it was really touching because Nancy McGraw telling what happened just after September eleventh. We sent a fire truck to New York. And how they were going to go to the towers, nope, they're gonna go to Brooklyn because Brooklyn didn't have any firefighters. They were all fighting over at the tower. So South River had to guard Brooklyn and the various calls that were being made and having things done there and just, I never heard the details. I knew that we had sent a truck, but it was really truly something capped by the men coming back from the pit, covered in dust, gray dust, looking like ghosts. It's truly something. And you could see it on TV or you could have been there. And I hope that you will be at our various events that are going on in South River. Come to the car show. The sun will still be up at six o'clock. You can come down, see what's going on, visit the various restaurants that are there, the little stores. Worthwhile coming out for that. The weather will still be nice. The opening of the time capsule. For the younger generation, you may not be so excited, but you know, I'm an old timer. I was taking part back in the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary back then, nineteen seventy. So I figure my name is in there. So I'm gonna go and see that and all the other little trinkets and things that the people in nineteen seventy thought was important as we're gonna start to think about what are we going to do with our latest one as we are going to replace it sometime. So, and again, that's just part of an activity. We have things going on in this town. To bring us together, you know, everybody talks about unity. Well, there are things that we all can participate in. It doesn't cost any money to do so. So, you know, think about it. Pay attention to what's going on in town and by all means, participate. Is there anything else to come before us this day? Hearing none. May I have a motion to close? Motion by Mr. Gindy to close, seconded by Mrs. Ballas. All in favor?
Aye.
All against? The ayes have it. We'll see you on October the fourth. You should come more often.